Well, it is 6:30. So, uh, 6:30 Monday, June 17th, 2024. We are going to start, uh, the Non-Indian Board of Select, uh, meeting right now. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I was, but whatever. Uh, just to shout out to the Pataquei Lake Improvement Association, they had their annual meeting, um, this not Saturday, the Saturday before. It was a very nice turnout. It was nice to see everybody, um, and everybody that donated. John Decker and I were both at the meeting, uh, talking about, uh, situations on the lake and about, uh, milfoil, and, uh, it was pretty informative. It was a nice meeting. Is there anything you want to add to that, John?
Um, I, I can't remember the lady's name, the lady from the state. I was gonna look that stuff up.
N-I-S-A-M-A-T.
What?
F-A-R-K-S.
Okay. So she did a great, she did an excellent presentation, and one of the things she talked about was water quality and that lakes that lose water quality, that their property values can drop as much as a third. So it's really important that we maintain the water quality in that lake to keep that tax base up.
And she brought it in for all the other lakes in town, too. You'd wanna say is the fact of the fertilizers people use and stuff like this on their lawns and how detrimental it is to the, the water quality. And since we have, uh, three nice, you know, lakes in town, you know, it's something for people to, uh, be aware of, you know, what they're doing to their properties and how it can affect the water quality. Cause even stuff that comes off North River, if that water quality changes, that changes the whole North River coming all the way through town. So again, the importance of taking care of your property and doing it in a responsible environmental way so that it doesn't affect the lake is very important for every place in town that's abiding in water.
Yep. All waterfront property owners should get their septic systems pumped and inspected every three years, and they should not use fertilizer like John just mentioned, um, and that the, if you pull or pump water out of the, the lakes, they actually are basically pre-fertilized, so it's like you reuse that water, um, and then that actually includes your fertilizer, basically. So there is no need to actually use fertilizer.
So she's very informative, nice part of the meeting. Uh, alright, so we're gonna move on now to, um, minutes. And, uh, payroll and the manifest, sorry. Jumped ahead one, sorry.
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest for June 10th, 2024, and payroll for June 11th, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Morn.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
Uh, do we have motions for the minutes or any changes anybody saw in the minutes or notes?
I had a couple of changes, small ones. Um, it looks like one of them was already corrected, but, uh, so line 268, um, I think we should strike out "not." Mr. Decker asked if the town was paying to keep tax maps, tax maps up to date, and Administrator White said yes, so "not" should be stricken. Then on line 312, this sentence came out a little weird, but I would suggest we change, uh, starting in the middle with, with Mr. Decker. Mr. Decker said season passes, or if people can get seasonal passes, um, however, the park gets, um, busy and they fill up very fast, or something like that. So Mr. Decker said people can get seasonal passes, however, the park gets busy and fills up fast. That's what I had.
The only change I had was for the non-public minutes.
We can do this separate.
Okay.
Alright, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of 6:30 as amended.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second for the, uh, minutes for the 6:30 meeting. All in favor?
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Morn.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
And thank you, Susan, for putting this together for us. Uh, non-public?
Yeah, the only edit I had is my name isn't there and a motion to make to seal the minutes. It should just be removed.
Second page, bottom paragraph.
Yeah. Where's this "seconded by Tim DaBrio"?
There was no motion to seal.
Right, it was a mo-, right, there was a motion, but it wasn't seconded.
There was no motion to seal them.
What's that?
It was from the last seal.
Alright, oh, okay.
It should just be removed altogether.
Other than that, I make a motion to approve the June 3rd non-public minutes as amended.
Alright, I'll second.
Motion and a second on the non-public meeting, uh, from June 3rd. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Morn.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
Boards and committee, I'll start off, we had a planning board meeting last week, and we were go-, one of the pieces of part of the meeting was the subdivision located on Route 126, across from Nottingham Sand and Gravel. Uh, then we had, um, another, uh, resident came in about a lot line adjustment. Um, there was some quite issues with it on how they were making it and making whether they're making the subdivision of the lot and they're putting a two-acre lot, but they didn't have a building envelope of 30,000 square feet. So they're gonna make a non-conforming lot, which we don't allow in the zoning quarters. So they'll be back in front of us with a, uh, new layout for how they want us to divide to try to make their envelope of the 30,000 square feet. And then we went over at the end of the meeting where John was, um, also sitting with the board at the time, how about going over fees, uh, for developments and stuff like that, and how we're trying to take some of the burden cost off the town for mailing packets and stuff like this and, uh, putting it on the applicant so that the town doesn't have to incur the costs. Uh, so we know some changes and updating some of the things, and we use some other towns in their data, uh, to get to those numbers, which we will see, uh, for us to vote on, since it's our, where they're gonna have to give the okay for the new fees, but those were actually coordinated from like three different towns they got the information from. So we weren't trying to make our fees astronomical or anything different. We were just trying to bring them more in line with what other towns were doing, so, but you'll see those coming up.
Right, and the second part of that is, um, we, Select Board needs to address the, take a look at the building permit fees, but we should probably get some input from Dale on that, so that would be a future, um, agenda topic.
And that's what I have for planning board. A budget, that's not happening?
No, nothing new with budget committee.
Good.
Uh, recreation, flag football, and aftercare registration. Noon tomorrow, the internet will be flooded with registrations, so the bandwidth is limited. And then the yard sale was this past Saturday, I stopped by, it was, um, warm to sit at least in the blacktop.
Oh, yeah.
But it would seem to go well, there's people there. Um, and then the new wrestling mats did, are arriving on Wednesday in the 100-degree heat to be unloaded, so they'll be nice and warm. New wrestling mats for the community center for the wrestling program.
Who has to unload them?
There's a few volunteers, a couple of, I think, the wrestling coaches will be there, and then anybody else that might be interested in losing about 15 pounds of water weight, you're welcome to stop by.
Also, another quick note about the, uh, for the Nottingham Parks and Rec, the Summer Concert Series will be starting, I believe, on July 9th. Uh, so there's four shows, uh, the shows are on Tuesdays, and they start at 6:30, and they'll be located right here at the bandstand. Due to any incoming weather, the shows will happen inside the gymnasium. But that's starting on, uh, July 9th, so they were great these past couple of years, so I'm sure they're gonna be great again.
I'm assuming part of the fence is coming down?
Huh? Yes, the outfield fence, yeah, it'll be coming down before that.
I didn't even notice, but yeah, there you go. The fence out there.
It's the last week of rec practices, so.
Uh, does anybody have anything else to add to, for the departments?
Uh, I checked in with Steve Rawls, he said that everything's going pretty good on the Highway Department, so, uh, and also CIP is just still out there, and we need to pull people together and.
July, is that when you're planning for it?
Yeah, so we, we need to start getting people together.
I'll send out, do you want me to send out a, a mail to the group and just see if we can get conversation started about setting a date?
That would be fine, thank you.
Yeah, because the goal could be July, but August might be.
Right, exactly. If we don't, we should start it now, we should, it's July pretty soon.
Did anybody, in the past, I'm gonna bring this up right now because, you know, we're on recycling, um, due to the weather on Thursday being 100, could be 100-plus, the fact that the building has no AC except for that one little room, you know, in the past we have closed it down for the day due to excess heat or because of, you know, and just looking for feedback on what you guys think, you know, I mean, do we leave it up to their discretion?
I, well, I think we should be more proactive than waiting until Wednesday or Thursday.
That's why we're bringing, that's why we're bringing it up today, so.
It's gonna be, you know, I know it's gonna be hot, and we, I think, have clothes when it's cooler, to be honest with you.
Right, and it's just for the fact that it's gonna be 100.
Right.
And there is no, and their hours on that day are from 11 to 7, which is gonna be the most, the hottest time. And we do have to make a decision if we are going to shut it down for that day, we have to have that, so we can post it.
Right.
And I don't know what you guys feel about that or not, I mean, it is.
I, I think it's probably a good idea, but I think that we want to give them a choice to, you know, cause it's their hours that they'd be missing.
But I've asked, do you know if they've minded not working in 100-degree heat?
Not in my experience.
Yeah, do you want to even mention?
I can reach out to them.
Yeah, that's probably.
Individually and just see if.
If you'd even be staffed.
So under that note, if that's what they say, we'll be able to say it tomorrow. So everybody, are we all comfortable saying, guess what? If they say down there that they're comfortable taking the day off because it's gonna be so hot, we're given authorization right now to say that we're just not gonna have it open?
Yeah, I am comfortable with that. Do we need a motion and a, or anything?
I don't think we need a motion.
We all agree, so.
But we can't also have the, we can't also have one guy say he wants to go and two that don't, yeah, it doesn't work that way, it has to.
Elmo Wolf's.
John, can you just make sure our nixle goes out?
Yes, that.
Oh, a nixle for the, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that is really important.
I don't have the report online, so, okay.
You don't have that on yours?
No, I don't.
I don't.
I don't get it.
You want me to add you?
Sure. Like I need something else.
It's super convenient.
Uh, so now, anything else from committees or anything like that? Before we move on to the Town Administrator Report. See you none, lol.
Alright, um, I received notice today, I believe this might have transpired last week, there was discussion about, uh, closing Church Street additionally. Um, originally Cruz Knight was looking to close it down for a week in August for their regular car show, I guess there's going to be a bike event tomorrow. Um, I believe the Police Department and the Highway Department have already been notified of this, um, I don't foresee there being any problem, they've, the Highway Department's already got the barricades ready to go, um, there will be a nixle alert that goes out, but the, um, Church Street will be closed tomorrow, June 18th, from 4:30 to 7:15, so obviously detour further down, you can still get to your destination fine.
Right.
4:30 to 7:15.
Thank you.
Uh, public hearing, this is just a reminder, a public hearing's going to be scheduled July 1st at your next meeting, I have it tentatively on the schedule for 7:00 PM, that's actually what the advertising notice will go out at, uh, regarding the recycling center hours discussion, and I am working on putting together a voting poll that's gonna be posted to the town's website, uh, with a shortened week last week, it's something that, uh, it's an uncharted water in the webs-, in the website, so I've had to figure out how to navigate through that, but I think I have it pretty well set up, so I'm hoping to get that live and on the website tomorrow to get some additional community feedback that you can consider. Today, they started installing some additional keypad access, um, the main locations that we wanted to make sure were done are the rear community room in preparation for this conference room to be eventually relocated there, so, um, keypad access there, the town clerk's office has a keypad access, but it's on their interior office door, there isn't one on the external, it's still a keyed access, so it's just a way of, um, putting everything all on one system, the security system, that way you have controlled access in and out, and you can actually, um, have monitored access at that point. Additionally.
Are they going to keep the key pass at the?
On the inside, yes.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think that's important to maintain that as well.
Yeah, I think when they originally put the system in, um, I think it just made the most sense to keep that, the secured access point, uh, probably for budgetary constraints or what have you, but since we were already running the wiring down, it was a shot passed, so we decided to add the additional keypad access, um, for the town clerk's office. And then additionally, um, in speaking with the rec department, we decided to also do the gymnasium doors. Uh, one of the issues that, um, Bodat has brought to our attention is obviously our air conditioning system is aging, it's doing fine at this time, however, it does put an additional strain on it in the summer with the summer camp having the, the doors open because the system is still running, so it does put an additional burden on the air handler. Um, so we are going to strive to have those doors closed during summer camp this year, but we still need to be able to control some type of access, so these keypads will be beneficial in doing that. Um, the staff will be equipped with either a fob or card access to be able to let the children in and out from the playgrounds and the fields.
Are they gonna have closers so that they?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so that is, uh, that project started this morning, it's still very much underway, it'll probably, it will definitely be wrapped up by the time summer camp starts this week. Um, additionally, the restrooms are in the process of a conversion, um, the one that was in the main foyer was a designated women's two-stall bathroom, and in an effort to kind of keep the summer camp, um, children and the staff contained to this side, especially as we're converting this to rec space, um, we took what was the family access ADA restroom that was down this hallway across from the men's room, um, we, we pretty much shifted the stalls over there, so that now has two stalls, this is designated female, and then you have the designated male, and then the one that's now out in the foyer, which is pretty much like a public access, it's unisex, ADA compliant, handicap, um, ADA compliant and also will be family, we still have to put the changing station on the wall and paint the wall, do some patching, so that one's very much in progress, but that will be, um, a more accessible restroom for the general public to use. So that is, um, still very much underway, but all bathrooms are now functioning, and we still have the equivalent of five toilets. I spoke with Alan Tramp this morning, and he has two to three days marked out this week to start removing some of the interior walls in the rear community center. Um, they've done most of the cleanup that they could do, now they're just gonna start removing some of the walls where the roof is leaked and, you know, it's blown out the insulation, maybe start removing some of the, the roof framework, the dumpster, the 20-yard dumpster that's out there, uh, was emptied probably about a month ago now, so we're gonna do our best to get that filled up with whatever they can. Um, so that will be taking place in probably the, the peak heat days of this week. And, uh, let's see, uh, we had a work session previously scheduled for last Wednesday to review the personnel policy for updates, obviously we canceled it because of the court hearing that was in place, so I, I don't wanna backburner it too long, so I'd like you to try to come to a consensus of a date that we can reschedule that. Do you have any thoughts, recommendations?
Do we think?
Yeah, I don't know.
Do we think we could get it done in a regular meeting? Cause I, I mean, I, cause I think one of the things, when I was going through it, we reviewed that last fall, not, you know, the four of us.
I mean, I did take a lot of notes.
Yeah. So I don't know how much time, cause we did, I don't know how many changes you have suggested or if they're just questions or?
Well, yeah, they're, they're discussion points.
Yeah, so you think it'll take a while?
Uh, it'll take a while, yeah. It's gonna take a while.
Any chance you could send those notes prior to the meeting, so we have a chance to?
I would be happy to. Right, I, how do we want to do that? Do we want to do, like, you want me to send out my notes and then we still work session based on that or?
Send them to Ellen.
Right.
And then she'll pass them through us.
Okay. Okay. Alright, I just gotta type them up, cause they're all just penned in red.
So what dates work for everybody here? What dates work?
Probably get into July at this point.
Definitely into July, that's.
Not, not for July.
Well, we're having a public hearing on July 1st, so that, that's gonna take a, alright.
Right.
So it'll have to be the next one, the 14th?
15th.
15th, sorry, whatever.
If we do it, if we do it during the meeting.
Or we could do it on the 8th.
This depends on what else we got going on in our meetings.
Well, we don't have any of this.
Do you have the ability to come in maybe a half an hour earlier to start the?
That's gonna be hard for John, probably.
Yeah, a little difficult. I make it for 6:30 all the time, just.
We can pull up.
But, you know, whatever, guys, if I work for you guys, I'll work around.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind being here for the meeting on the 15th. So you guys are more than welcome to.
It's fine, again, as long as, you know.
I mean, we could do it on the 8th.
Yeah, it's the other option, is I could do the 8th.
It's the Monday.
It's the Monday after, yeah.
Probably fine with me. Does that work for Matt?
Uh, I'm trying to think, I'm not sure when I will be back, I might be back that morning, so I, we can schedule it, and if there's a conflict with me or if I can review the notes, if I have anything, then I can just, well, let's go the 8th.
Okay, alright, I'll get those together.
Yep, it's a workshop kind of meeting. Yep.
For general correspondence has been received, there was, um, an email that was received from Doug Bates on June 5th, 2024 regarding some town beach suggestions that I've provided attached to my report for your review. There was a lot of suggestions that were made, I didn't know if you wanted time to review or if you have any response to the email. Don't believe there was anything that really required response other than just.
Internalizing.
I, I do like the suggestion of removing town beach altogether, so that it's not Google, Google-able, searchable, and foundable. Cause that can create, I think, issues, as you had mentioned, with people from outside of town that just find it.
Thinking it's a public resource.
So I don't remember seeing this one, is this the email address that I'm not in, the BOSS PC?
The BO, so the BOSS PC is the one that just comes into the town office and then it gets circled, circulated off to you. It might not have been sent off to you last week, just with the timing, I don't know if Nancy.
I mean, that's.
Nancy forward some and then sometimes I forward them. But we'll double check that, so you're, you're not receiving some emails, John, is that what?
I didn't see, I didn't see this one, I have not seen this one.
I don't think I got this one either.
Okay.
So maybe none of us did, so, okay.
And that's possible.
It does say it was forwarded, but I, yeah.
Yeah, the renaming's a good idea.
What's that?
Renaming it is a good idea.
Yeah, or just removing at least for now the searchable content. When it comes to, I mean, I, as far as ticketing and stuff like that, we're not even there yet, it's great information, but.
Not ready yet.
No. In my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, it, just skimming through it, looks like these are decent suggestions.
But we really haven't had time to digest it, so I would.
Yeah.
Spend a lot of time on it tonight. Personal opinion.
But if we wanna start pulling beach out of the name, that would be a start.
Yep.
At least that's the easy button to start doing, I think that's pretty.
Rename it as what?
Right.
We'd have to enter and do another poll.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's, yeah.
And make it like four suggestions and say, this is what it is. Yeah. Not let it go too wild or crazy. Right.
Ready to move on?
Sure.
Okay, uh, the next one was received from Lorraine Petrini, uh, email dated 6/6/2024, and it was regarding, um, some road attention that was needed on Camelot Court, there was a rather large, um, pothole that pretty much occurred, um, I don't even know how long ago, six weeks, eight weeks ago, anyways, right at the entrance. Um, the Highway Department has since addressed it, they had to wait for a nice dry day to put some emulsification in it, a cold patch, so that has since been repaired, but I am forwarding the correspondence to you as was requested by, uh, Ms. Petrini and several of the residents on that road, so, um, I don't think there's any further attention that needs to be addressed to that. And then the last piece of correspondence was from Skip Severance, it was an email received last evening, I said the 17th, but it was actually received on, I think it was the 16th.
15th.
15th, okay, so received on the 15th, and it is a request to unseal and make the non-public minutes of March 20th and March 23rd available now that the court hearing has taken place, um, so that would be another consideration that you would do under non-public session.
And one more thing of correspondence, uh, our state rep, Hal Raft, Rafter contacted me, asked if there was anything, uh, if he, if the board wanted to meet with him or anything like this, uh, for this upcoming session to, for him to be, changes or something for him to propose, if anybody had any ideas or anything like that, I didn't really have too many things, so, but he was curious if he wanted to come in, actually come sit with us, if we had some or if we did have any suggestions to bring it up to him. So he just reached out to us as a board, me in particular, but for the board to know, so as a correspondence, I'd put that out there.
No, that's good.
And that concludes my report, I do have, um, three separate non-public sessions after the rest of the general meeting.
All right. To the time, it's seven o'clock. We have an appointment tonight. And this is Dallas Higgins. This is regarding Revolutionary Road culverts. Please, come have a seat.
Now, that's the thing, I wouldn't open on my computer.
I'd download it.
Yeah, I clicked down, and it's still like.
And so there was a typo. It's actually the Reservation Road, yeah.
Oh, all right, okay.
But yes, I'm here today to talk to you about that culvert in particular. This is all within Potuckaway State Park on Reservation Road. There's a culvert there. It is very old. It's in need of replacement anyway. And so it's a, it takes a lot to maintain it, and it's also a flooding risk. And so in general, could could use a upgrade. But this area in particular is identified as one of the highest ranked habitats in the state, as well as region, but particularly the state. And and so it also has been identified recently as the highest mortality risk in the state for wildlife. And because of that, it, well, so it's especially important because there are some endangered species, specifically the Blandings turtle is in this region. And they are, this is one of the last stable populations that they have in the northeast, actually. And, sorry to take a step back, I'm also a licensed wildlife rehabilitator in the state, and I focus on turtles. So this is something we're, we're very aware of, the kind of, how important our area is for these, this particular species, and we're in a unique place to help them. So this effort would be to restore habitat connectivity in the area. And so New Hampshire Fishing Game, they approached us with this opportunity because there's this grant through, it's called the America the Beautiful. And so it's specifically to get funding for for these projects, where it would be ninety percent of the funding actually would would come from this grant. And so the the conserva, they approached the Conservation Commission, and we met with like the Highway Department, and we've been kind of discussing this possibility. And we're all very supportive of it because of the impact for wildlife, and you know, how how positive it could be. But so anyway, we we worked with New Hampshire Fishing Game, and we came up with a pre-proposal, which is not a commitment at all. It's just to be accepted to make a proposal. And so we did submit that, and we got accepted for the pre-proposal, so we are able to move forward should we get the support from the town. So we're, that's where we're at currently in the process. But yes, basically, we would, the next step would be to provide a letter of commitment, along with this this application specifically. And that would be to to specifically that we would be, they, the funding would be for ninety percent of that of that, and then ten percent has to be matched by the town in some way. The majority of that can be in-kind donations. So that can be like the services that we get from everybody, from like the town engineer, the the various, various people that we're working with, that can be in-kind donations. But there's also a two point five percent cash requirement that is currently with the estimate, it is eighty-two thousand five hundred, the full project. And so two point five percent of that would be, yeah, we're not, we're not forking out eighty-two thousand dollars.
The top one is all there.
So that would be two point five percent of it, which would be two thousand and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. And that is with the estimate that we currently have. This is all still being in in works, kind of the development of the design and everything. But and so basically, that that would be the biggest thing for the commitment, is just a support from the town to show that we we do care about this. But it is, because this culvert really does need replacement in many ways, it seems like a just overall win, because we get a huge amount of money from the government to be able to actually support, you know, actually improve this culvert, and not just improve, sorry, I should, to take a step back, there's the culvert itself, it actually would be slightly over from the culvert. So it wouldn't be necessarily replacing that one as much as taking, like, we would just be making a new design that was way more effective, according to this guidance document. And yes, and there's also just as far as the match, we're still, I think, figuring out how much, because there might even be additional in-kind that we can do out of the two point five percent. But at the very most, we would be required would be that two point five percent.
So you said two point five percent had to be cash, but ten percent total, right? So our in-kind would have to meet that, so eight thousand two hundred, whatever?
Yes. And so that would be entirely, or could entirely be services from the town in, as well as, they even mentioned that New Hampshire Fishing Game time and volunteers as well, like, all of that can be factored in.
Okay. Well, that's helpful that the state time also counts towards that in time.
Yeah.
What would the timeline be for, like, let's say, things start moving forward, is it two thousand twenty-five?
It would be, yeah, it would be the, it wouldn't be this year that the actual culvert would be. The, it's a quick turnaround for the application, which is July seventeenth. But the the actual, like, there is a process, I want to say it was November before they selected people, and then it's like, you you go through the process in addition. So yeah, it wouldn't be this year, for sure.
So it would be budgeted into the twenty twenty-five budget?
That's, yeah, I guess that's a good question, if that would be.
For when payment has to be made, I'm sure, when it's done, or whatever, however it works, just to.
Yeah, that's a good point, actually. That's a question I should clarify.
One of the things that we need to know is when the money would be necessarily due.
Yeah.
Which makes it probably a more decision on where we sit after, you know, town votes on the budget, town goes on this, where we sit.
So even if it's a grant, we still expend the money, and then we get reimbursed by the grant, right? So would this something that, be something that has to be a warrant article, then, or, because it'd be eighty-two thousand dollars?
Normally, you would, you would go through the process, this would be considered unanticipated revenue. So you would go through the process, you'd hold a vote on it, you'd hold a vote on it to accept the unanticipated fund and approve the expenditure therefrom.
Do we have to have a public hearing for that?
Uh, yes. I think it's under forty-one fourteen.
Can we use conservation money for this?
We don't.
Five hundred dollars.
That's all we have, is five hundred bucks?
Just getting the budget, they don't have a huge budget.
No, no, I'm, I mean, the conservation trust fund.
All right.
Another option to potentially would be to, for the Conservation Commission to partner with the Board of Selectmen, where we can actually, like, raise these funds potentially. Like, if we could, for instance, do a blast on the website, and be able to kind of get, raise that amount of funds, I think.
Right, exactly. We can get donations and stuff like that. But I'm just thinking as like a, a base, if we could use the Conservation Trust Fund as the quote-unquote guaranteed money, and then whatever we can take in-kind donations and stuff like that.
How much is in that fund?
I I don't know.
I I think the Conservation Trust Fund is for a specified purpose.
I'd have to read it again. I don't know.
Right, well, that's why I'm asking, because, I mean, this is, sounds like it's definitely.
Of course, I'm sure there's somebody that might know in the room here, but we'll get there for a second, so.
Yeah, my understanding is that that's used only for easements, but I would need to clarify if there's any exceptions.
Is this? Is it slated to be replaced over there?
This is not on the state property. This is on the small, New Hampshire, Nottingham's property on Reservation Road, right?
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, it's like right on the border of Deerfield, and so Deerfield and Nottingham both maintains the road.
Right.
And so they they share responsibility there, yeah. But it is considered Nottingham's responsibility, this culvert.
Yeah, look quickly, you gotta go all the way into Deerfield.
You can't get.
Yeah, for us to do the work.
And then it's like ten feet, and then you're in the state park.
Why is there such a high death rate on that road for wildlife?
It is a, just because of the importance of the habitat. It's just highest ranked in the state, and it's one of the last stable populations there. So it just, the way the road comes down, it's like it dips down, which also encourages them to cross. So there's a lot of things in factor as far as the guidance document, like what they're trying to do, because there's, there's the aspect of like being able to provide adequate light, so they actually want to cross, as well as making it so it's not, they're not just like encouraged to go down into the road, which it currently is. It kind of dips down right there. So and there's really no other way to cross, because that culvert really isn't accessible to go through. So, yeah.
Will this be a culvert for other animals and species besides?
Yeah, it's with.
That might be something you also want to note in, before we're just talking about the single turtles, but putting, what's the big benefit for other species that are in the area, just for selling feature when we're asking the town for money?
Yeah. And the Wildlife Action Plan is is looking at all species when it's talking about that highest ranked habitat. It's just particularly impactful, because they just created this document for Blandings turtles in particular. So that's the only reason I'm continuously talking about them, because that is what this guidance document is about. But it's all factoring in, like amphibians, and and, you know, everything, like, that will be a benefit to them, too, to have a crossing.
But it has no drainage, per se.
It's just a big swampy area. Right?
What was that?
It's a big swampy area.
Currently, there's, there's like a wetlands on both sides, and there's, yeah, the, like, this little, it's just a, a round, kind of like, black pipe that goes through. I'm forgetting the names now. How how does that five, yeah?
Yes, I'm concerned, because, you know, we're in default budget this year. We don't know what's gonna happen next year. And we, at minimum, we have a tax cap. You know, it's gonna be really tight. And that's why I'm kind of suggesting we investigate.
Yeah, but they have to get the grant first, like, getting the grant.
Well, right, but we have to back it up before they can get it, or before they can apply.
I think what they're looking for is basically a commitment of interest.
Mm-hmm.
Not saying that we're going to pay for it, right?
Um.
Quite yet, because we need to find out what the funding's going to be.
Yeah, right. They're still in the plans, and we're still, yeah, getting that, those official estimates, yes.
Would it be something that the ARPA funds, if it was dedicated to it this year, like November, we go through the process, November, let's say we get it, and then we have to commit twenty-seven hundred dollars, we commit twenty-seven hundred to the ARPA fund. It just has to be dedicated to it, right? And then it could be.
And that has to be expended by next year.
This, it has to be expended, it has to be expended.
Committed this year.
Committed.
Correct.
Yeah, committed, gotcha. Committed this year, and then spent next year. So that's.
That's an option.
Correct.
I still like the conservation thing, though, because it is definitely conservation-related, in my opinion, you know?
Depending on what's written, right, the expenditure.
Well, I mean, that's what the whole grant's about. Right, right. If we, if the, if we can actually do that, yes.
Right. And then, actually, don't we have highway money for culverts?
We have highway money for anything highway-related. So this is technically a road infrastructure.
Improvement.
Improvement.
Thing. Not that there's a ton of money there, but that was like forty thousand.
Seventy, I think it's seventy-five collectively between the two years.
Okay.
Is what remains.
So there's some money still sitting there that we haven't spent for road projects yet. This is a road project, and we're gonna be doing it.
It's gonna get spent.
Maybe. It's twenty-seven hundred dollars in cash that we have to. The rest is our labor. So I think we could, in one of these three buckets, find twenty-seven hundred dollars that we just don't spend elsewhere.
I'd hope so.
Okay. It's June, we can make that commitment.
What's the longevity of the project? Like, once it's finished and done, is this something that's gonna be around for fifty years, or sixty years, or is this something that's gonna have to be repaired in fifteen years?
I I think the intention is to make it as substantial as possible. I'd have to get back to you as far as like estimates or so on. I'm not exactly sure how to answer that, but just not being an engineer personally, but, but yeah, that, that.
Didn't know if you did one of these before, somebody else, and they told you that.
Yeah, no, not yet. This is actually the first, not the first, sorry. These are, these guidance, at least, is is kind of newer, where they're, they're establishing all these protocols and so on. So, yeah, haven't done anything like this before. But yeah, as far as to the, it might be useful to talk to the Highway Department. We, when we went out, for instance, it sounded like it was a big pain as far as the maintenance goes already, that they had to do a ton of maintenance. And like, when we were out there, it was really poorly running. And so it was kind of like, it's not, you know, like, clearly it's not being maintained very well. So it has more of a benefit than just, you know, for, it has more of a benefit for humans as well as wildlife.
I think we could find the twenty-sixth if we had to, especially if we have to expenditure next year.
Yeah.
Do you want to commit tonight, or would you do our due diligence?
Well, she needs her paperwork in by July seventeenth, is that what you said?
Yes, yeah.
But we got another meeting.
Yeah, we go thirty days.
Yep.
I think we can easily commit to twenty-seven hundred. And she's already talked to Steve, who's on board with the project, which would be the other ten percent. I think this is pretty easy. We can commit to the project. I don't see a.
And I think, I think you met with Owen at one point, the engineer locally, he, he's currently in talking with them right now. So that also would be assumed in part of the in-kind donations, should he keep pursuing that. But he was interested in that.
And just for clarification, it's not twenty-six hundred dollars, it's two thousand sixty-two fifty, based on the eighty-two five. So it's a little bit less, every penny counts.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. And Owen Frankre is a engineer in time. He also sits on the budget committee, but been very generous with his time for the town, so.
Yeah.
So would we have to make a motion for it to?
There's no, there's no money to allocate quite yet.
Do you have the the template of the letter of commitment that you need, or does it just have to be something drafted by the Board of Selectmen stating that?
We didn't have an official template, but I know New Hampshire Fishing Game had provided some guidance when the Conservation Commission had done their, their letter. So I could always ask him if he has, or if they have a template for that.
Okay. I know every grant application is different. Sometimes they have a specified form that they want you to use.
Okay, yeah, I'll check in on that.
Do you want to give a temporary approval, saying that the two percent won't go over a total of like twenty-seven hundred dollars, based on just that amount of number right now? So if it does come in at like five or six for some reason, just protecting us in the interest?
Well, it's two thousand sixty-two, so I don't think we need to go to twenty-seven.
Well, we'd give a little bit of leeway in bucks, and we're not going, just saying, but that's.
I realize it's.
Twenty-two hundred.
Six hundred bucks.
I'm just, I'm just, twice, I'm just saying, I was just bringing twenty-seven hundred dollars, and that, but if this project exceeded that by a large amount, then we'd have to reconsider what we did. But for now, just to get her in the process of going, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea, as mine is.
No, I, I don't, I, I agree that it would be good to do this. It's just a matter of, I I know it's not much money, but still, you know, we're in super tight money situation right now, and.
But if we don't get the grant, then it's gonna cost us ninety thousand dollars, so.
It's not even on our list.
It is on the list. It's on the highways list of things that needs.
I thought it was not.
This one's not on our list?
It's not on our list.
Okay. If it was, you prioritize, it's very low, if it's on Reservation Road.
Right, right, right.
I don't, it was just the state of them? I don't think it was, the commitment, when the guy came in, they just looked at the the facting of if they were being transferred on. In terms, it was just like the state, good, monitoring, crumbling.
Right. I mean, yeah, it's definitely a conservation effort.
I guess if we feel things are tight, we just put it in a warrant article.
Yeah, but we can't, they still have to be within that four percent.
Right.
So.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't really matter.
I don't.
I forward with it, but.
I say move forward, I don't understand how we can't.
Yeah, I mean, between, between potential of conservation money, ARPA funds, I think we can come up with money.
And the fact it's still gonna be based on whether they can approve it or not.
Right.
So there's another big factor into this.
When would you know?
I need to get the specific date. I want to say that it was in November. But yeah, later in the year.
Yeah.
Which I think that would be tough, too, with the, by November, right?
No, that's when we would know whether or not the grant got approved.
But if we were trying to do any other, no, the budget process is still pretty early on in November.
Right.
We don't have to have things set until January, so.
All right, so we're gonna make a motion? That, to approve the twenty-seven hundred dollars? Or you guys who want to do twenty-six fifty? Gonna go over that, or?
So it's two thousand sixty-two, not two thousand sixty-five?
Oh, two thousand sixty-two, sorry.
We're down to closer.
I'm looking at the number wrong. I'm looking at the number wrong.
We can do twenty-one.
Twenty-one hundred then, good, twenty-one hundred, that even makes it more, now you feel even better about this thing, perfect.
Go for it, Steve.
So I'll make a motion, move ahead with the uh, this project, I'll take the twenty-one hundred dollars.
And I'll second.
This is the project for Reservation Road Culvert for Wildlife, stating it in the record.
Oh, thank you.
Alright, we got a motion, a second roll call.
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Mr. Sherrill.
There you go.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And I I'll send out um, information, I I put notes on some of the things that were asked that I didn't have clarity on, so if that's okay, I'll just send that around via email.
And then if you need something from the town saying that we are gonna provide the two percent or whatever like that, if that's part of the the package you gotta fill out, just let us know.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
For the road part. How would that have missed that road anyway? Remember they went through like every Nottingham road in that database?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're asking.
The this culvert said it wasn't in the database, I was just curious.
Oh, it's not in the database even?
That's what I was asking.
I I think when I I have to um, double check with Steve, but I believe that this is a road, even though the portion of it is in Nottingham, it's been solely maintained by Deerfield. Like they even maintain the culvert, but it is technically on Nottingham, so it's our responsibility when it comes time to replace.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I think Deerfield does the plowing and stuff like that.
Yeah, that would be severely inconvenient to drive a truck, seventeen miles or whatever.
Um, moving on.
Sorry.
Uh, we went over the general mail, is it?
Yeah.
So then we're going to X C R. Guys wanna go through assessing or do you wanna go to general business?
I was gonna do general business.
Do we get it, well, we gotta do all the stuff under Town Administrator for like the State Forest Land Application, the Inventory of Taxable Property, we gotta go through all those.
They weren't necessarily assessing items, so I had to list them elsewhere, but they should all require a motion to move forward with them.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion, any discussion on it?
I do have some questions on the land use change tax stuff.
Oh, under assessing?
If that's, if that's where we're, if that's what we're talking about.
Looking at the um, under general mail correspondence and signed documents, is the P A sixteen, P A twenty-eight, section five of the agenda.
Alright, section five, okay. Alright, yep.
Sure, I don't think I've seen this one before, the P A sixteen, so what's?
It's um.
Which one's that?
It's a form we have to file with the Department of Revenue, we have um, state or federal forest lands, which obviously we have four state forests.
Yeah.
In the town of Nottingham, so we have to provide them an inventory annually and we get a reimbursement back from the state.
So basically, we do get like some taxes from the state?
We we receive a revenue from the state.
Okay, I I'm sure it's very small.
It's very, yes, it's insignificant based on the the acreage of exempt property.
And of course, the state park is very huge.
Correct. So we have to report to them the current assessed values and whether or not we're in any um, any point of a periodic revaluation cyclical or statistical, um, which we're not quite there yet, but um, I've reported the values and then that information gets populated into their system to give us a small piece of revenue each year.
Okay, alright, so.
Do we just make a motion to approve that, or do we just have?
To sign the document, it's in the signature file.
So we just need to sign it, we don't need a motion to approve it?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the P A twenty-eight, that one, like.
So that one is.
Like every town that does not.
Not every town, some towns still use them, so um, what it is, is an inventory of taxable property, it's a mailer that gets sent to every uh, residents in Nottingham, or actually every property in Nottingham, and you have to identify, you know, how many people are in your home, if you've done any improvements since April first, whether you have dogs. Um, so we have an assessing department that captures most of that data for us, so it's a form where if you don't have traditional data collection, a lot of the smaller towns um, used to use it, but we haven't used it for several years.
Sounds like a nightmare. If you did it that way.
Yeah.
Okay. That's how I read it and I was like, I can't do that way, but.
So that one's asking for, it says signature of assessing, are we considered the assessing officials or?
You are the assessing officials, yes.
Okay, so it's not the assessing department?
That's a contract assessor, you're the final say.
That's what I wanted to verify.
Again, doesn't need a motion, just a signature.
Correct.
Okay.
Alright, the next one.
Next two to require, oh, and so the um, the first of the last two, the Agreement and Release Regarding Building Permit for a Private Road, this is specifically for map one lot twenty-four on Sunrise. Uh, so this is a a camp that has been converted to a full-time residence, um, they have already, the the people residing at that property have already um, established their residency here in Nottingham and what they're nearly seeking to do is to be able to put a post off um, a mailbox at the property or wherever the mailboxes are located off of Sunrise. Um, so we need to be able to provide them with the postmaster, with acknowledgement that we see that property as a um, address within Nottingham. However, Dale cannot issue that because of the situation where it's, it was once seasonal, now it's permanent year-round without doing this release, and this gets filed with the Registry of Deeds.
It's still a private road.
Correct.
Hence, the big thing is it's a private road.
It is.
This is the same form that uh, every person that ever lived on an emergency lane or whatever had to fill out for years when they were transforming their camps into this waiver that we signed here says the town is not liable for their road maintenance or anything. If emergency acts, uh, vehicles cannot get through it because there's a blizzard, it's not the town, can't come after the town because it's not our road.
Mm-hmm.
So this is the waiver, it's basically saying that we give them, that's okay.
Yeah, it's.
Something that we've been using in town for years, it's not something that's brand new.
Which road is Sunrise?
We don't see it anymore because all the roads have become town roads.
Which road is Sunrise?
It's over on like in Northwood.
It's on the Northwood line, um, half the road is in Northwood, the other half is in Nottingham.
Is there multiple houses on it or just?
Yes.
Not many though, I don't think.
Yes.
Yeah, usually it's not too many.
I was looking at it on the map, because I was curious, but it does pop up as being in Northwood, so you're saying the line cuts right through that?
Correct.
Do they have to re-sign this form in Northwood since the road's half in Northwood?
No, because it's, so it's technically.
Domicyles in.
Correct, so even though the mail is going to be carried through Northwood, it has to go to Nottingham first and then they redirect it to the Northwood carrier courier.
Which means it goes to Mass, Nottingham to Massachusetts back to Nottingham.
I believe it's Sunrise Lane.
Next day.
I believe it's Sunrise Lane officially.
Yeah, alright, so we just need to make a motion to approve the agreement and release, is that?
Correct.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the Agreement and Release Regarding Building Permit for Private Road, map one lot twenty-four.
Second.
Alright, Steve, you got it.
Roll call.
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Mr. Sherrill.
And the dogs again.
And the warrant for unlicensed dogs, I understand that um, four of you had the lengthy conversation when this came up last year.
Oh, yeah.
You have any questions? Welcome to ask them, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory, there have been multiple notices that have been issued to dog owners that they have an annual requirement to register their dogs with the town clerk's office by April first each year, this is the list of people that have not done so.
Wondering where my list of shame was, yes.
So this issues um, the uh, the warrant orders the town clerk to be able to.
Send letters out, right?
Yes, well, more official letters.
Yes, exactly.
Would you like to make that motion?
Just gonna put it on the to-do list, so whatever, make a motion, we're good.
Making a motion to approve the warrant for unlicensed dogs for two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, second.
Alright, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Mr. Sherrill.
Yes, my name is on the list, just see it.
But there's no public shaming here.
No, not so it's whatever.
Self-shaming.
Perfect.
Alright, so now we're on to assessing, John, you had a question about this one?
Yeah, so um, lot, uh, map sixty-eight, lot fifty-six. So that's like a non-conforming piece that, is that being like merged in with the adjacent lot?
Um.
You know, I, it's like, or is this gonna be some independent, non-conforming lot that's gonna be out there now?
The land use change tax is prompted when there is a change to the land which takes it out of its current use state. I have to look at the.
Right, there were the information in that those letters was like lacking, in my opinion, and not technically all correct. Or I didn't understand it, that's for sure.
Just a moment. Anyway, should have brought my computer.
You want mine?
It's okay, I got it.
Okay.
You're talking about map sixty-eight, lot fifty-six, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
You got it in front of you.
You got it right in front, yeah.
Yep. I got you.
Okay, so for sixty-eight fifty-six in particular.
So.
So this property.
So I can tell you everything about this property, if you just wanna spill it, maybe if you guys look at it, right?
Sure.
Property's located off Cahill Lane, uh, off Tuckaway Lake, this is the property here that um, was attached with a hundred acres of land.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, and it was a sliver of land that wasn't being used by the hundred acres, and the family has a hundred acres of current use, so what they did was they broke off a piece. So this point seven is actually going to be attached to the other waterfront property to make it a larger lot.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure, that's what I was.
It's, but but since this point seven that he came away was part of the the big parcel, and when he took it out, you have to pay a tax on it. So that's where the, where the lux tax comes in, he's paying it on that, but it's going to bring it, he's gonna bring it over to his properties to make a larger property.
Right, okay, and that's perfect, but that's the piece that I was not clear about whether it was actually being merged into a single lot.
Yeah, no, because it was just um.
Because I didn't wanna have some non-conforming lot sitting out there in the middle.
We wouldn't let him. You couldn't do that because you can't cut off a piece of land and make a non-conforming lot, where you have to have the two acres, but since you're taking, you, if you're, he has a non-conforming lot now and he's adding land to it.
Right.
That's good.
Yep.
Because we're making it less non-conforming.
Yeah.
And that's what's happening with this.
Yep, no, it's good, I was not opposed to it, I just wanna make sure that that's what was going on.
That's what's going on.
So I'm good with that one.
Good.
So.
Did you have?
The other two, so uh, fifty fifty-two, four-two-one and forty-six, seven-one. It says this comparison, like Goldenrod Lane.
Yep.
Where?
So you have to.
It's like, doesn't even show up in Nottingham.
It's.
Goldenrod Lane is off of um, Priest, it's a, it's one of the private driveways that we had to name because of a nine-one-one addressing issue, so that was, Goldenrod was just named in June, what, February, March of this year.
What's it off of?
Um, it's off of Priest. So these comparables, um, when you, when the assessor assesses the land use change tax, it's ten percent of the marketable value of the property, so use these these comparables to come up with a marketable value for the property.
Right, and I mean, is that? I mean, it seems potentially low for the for the amount that he came up with. But it's, you know, it's hard to know for sure, I don't know, I mean, it's oh, I'm not an assessor, so I don't know these values, but.
Most of the values in there are for larger pieces of property.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to, I mean, we don't have to, but I mean, we.
So like the reservation road one, I mean, basically that, if you look at that parcel, it's like a little skinny piece and then it widens out, widens out into like a normal-sized parcel, so it's probably technically like a two-acre parcel. You know, in reality, in practical use.
But he gave, also on this, the other one. At forty-six, seven-one, whatever, they're both the same, he values them both.
Right, oh, yeah, no, he valued them both the same, but I was like comparing the two acres of Goldenrod for one-seventy.
Those were the sale prices for recent transactions.
Yeah.
So we don't have control over what they sold for, we only got.
But that establishes value.
Mm-hmm.
If a value is is what we're supposed to be assessed on.
One story, here's a story for you, three is who I bought a piece of land, two-point-three acres, tell you everybody, whatever. And Avatar assessed it more than what I paid for, so I was forced to pay not my sale price, I was prepared to pay what they valued the property at.
Well, that's why I'm like surprised in this case.
Where, some cases it's more, some cases it's less.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I don't think, I mean, the poor, well, I wouldn't say the poor people, but they're coming up with thirteen thousand dollars cash.
Yeah.
I I don't see anything wrong with both of these, so.
Okay, I mean, I I get that they're both the same, so that makes sense, but I was just, I was just questioning it, because I, I was like, I don't, I can't find Goldenrod, you know, like kind of.
Yeah, but they also here to discuss on this, what you don't read on here is that you could have ten percent or fifteen percent of this property that is wetlands and marshes, it's unbuiltable.
Right.
That could bring down the value from one of the other ones.
Exactly.
So I I take it under Chad's knowledge that he's taking, that's why I, that's how I look at it, that's why I don't.
That's why he says accounting differences in location, topography, access and size, so that's why I assume that's what he's looking at.
Right, it doesn't, doesn't have a whole lot of information, in my opinion, but you know, for me to follow through, I'm not an assessor, so. Just questioning it.
Yeah, they're a new lot, so they're not gonna have a tax record anyways on it, so you're not gonna be able to tell anything about them, so. No, I'm, I'm happy to help with the questions, yeah.
I mean, that was really what I wanted to question.
Actually, thank you for asking, I mean, that's.
I don't trust anybody.
Good to know.
I'll ask him to elaborate a little bit further when it comes to his valuation methods.
That would be great.
Uh, does anybody wanna make a motion on those three land use change taxes, we talked about them all?
Yep, I make a motion to approve the land use change tax and warrant for map sixty-eight, lot fifty-six, map fifty-two, lot four-two-one, four-dash-two-dash-one. Map forty-six, seven dash, lot seven dash one.
Second.
Alright.
Uh, motion and a second, roll call.
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Mr. Sherrill.
Any more questions with the others?
No, 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 that was.
Okay.
That's fine, thanks.
Anybody wanna make good motions for the other ones?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for current use for map fifty-seven, lot three.
Second.
Roll call.
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Mr. Sherrill.
I make a motion to approve the intent to cut water timber and intent to cut water timber supplemental for maps twenty-four, lot one forty-four and map twenty-three, lot eleven.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Mr. Sherrill.
I make a motion to approve the yield tax levy for map eighteen, lot eighteen.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Mr. Sherrill.
And finally, I make a motion to approve the request for abatement for map forty-six, lot seven.
I did have one question on that, it said something about not pulling it off until after the the next taxes? So wouldn't that make this happen again?
I have to read his explanation, I apologize. I have to read his explanation, I apologize.
Got that one in front of you, John?
Yeah, it's there.
Request for abatement.
So yes, this, according to his memo, um, he's changed the value, well... No, cuz he's changed the value to zero, so if we abate the, the first tax bill for sixty dollars, and the value has now been changed to zero, it should not generate a tax bill for the second.
Okay, okay, cuz it's zero anyway, so even if it, it's still a lot, but then, remove the lot, okay.
It'll still be a lot for the remainder of two thousand twenty-four, but it'll...
I guess that makes, yeah, that ties it together, okay. Alright, that's fine. It just, to me, it seemed like, why wouldn't you just remove the lot now, but...
You can't because it's already been taxed.
Yeah. Okay.
So I made a motion to approve the request for abatement for map forty-six, lot seven.
Did you second that?
He just made it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Mr. Allen.
Alright. General business. Uh, we'll start with the town beach. Ellen?
Um, I don't have any updates at this time. The town attorney has been given a license for consideration for rewriting to replace the original agreement that she had drafted that was not what we were looking for. She was in court all last week. So I do not have a response back from her on that yet.
And they're waiting to hear from the insurance company as well?
Correct. As soon as, the, the license that, um, was drafted is very similar to a snowmobile trail access, and it refers to the duty of care, and, once we have something like that drafted, I just have to send it over to Primex for their coverage, whether it be under the town's general liability policy, or if there needs to be a supplemental policy to be able to cover the access.
So we are making progress.
There is progress.
That's what we want here.
Small progress.
Yeah, I mean, we're hopeful, I mean, I think if we get these pieces in place, that maybe potentially we could look at maybe opening up.
Okay.
Maybe not the whole week, or a portion of the week or something, without having paid personnel at the gate to see how that works maybe?
Sure.
And then if people still can't listen, then we'll just have to close it back up again, if, again, if we get all these other pieces in place. Which would be better than nothing.
Yep. Uh, any more on that right now, or? We're good? Good?
It will stay on the agenda as an ongoing issue until we can fully resolve it.
Absolutely. Disc golf at Marston?
What, a date with Susan? Sorry. I just, I was just saying, did you put a date like Susan, I need something...
She is well aware that the access has been prohibited at this point, so time is of the essence.
Okay. Try to, it doesn't seem like it should be too complicated to redraft something that's already drafted, so if we can just say like, anything.
Right, right, if we, yeah, if we can have it before next meeting.
Yeah, but at least so we can see it, so we can let the parties involved see it, so that we are able to make progress.
Any changes before we get to that next meeting?
Yes.
Exactly.
So I would just push a timetable or something.
Uh, when I talked to her on Thursday, um, she did let me know that there was no way that she could have it drafted for this evening, so I was prepared for that, but again, I, I don't think that it's going to require a whole lot of work on her part to get the draft circulated off to us.
Okay. So on our July first meeting, hopefully we have some better news and a lot more progress. Yeah.
Our rec department's here to talk about the disc golf at Marston's.
Hello, thanks for having us.
Thank you for coming.
Alright, um, we wanted to come, um, tonight so that we could provide you with an update on where we're at with our design.
If, if somebody needs a copy of that.
Perfect, thank you. Um, and basically, we're here to, to kinda get the green light from you all, to start, um, getting, you know, to order the disc baskets and to start, um, it's not construction, but...
Yeah, clearing a little bit what, what need to be cleared.
Yeah. Um, Bridgette has taken lead on this project as part of one of her goals for, um, this coming year with more adult, um, activities. Uh, but what I did wanna note was how wonderful this activity is for all ages. Um, it's all ages, genders, economic status, it's, it's an up-and-coming sport that has really, in my opinion, taken over New Hampshire.
Yeah.
Um, our dedicated volunteers would definitely agree, I wish some of them could be here tonight to express their, their excitement. Um, but we've had overwhelmingly, you know, we've had a lot of support with this project, so I'm gonna give it over to Bridgette, and I'm here for questions.
Yeah, so a little background, um, we kinda started talking about this four or five years ago, Dan Bunker, who works at the library, is very passionate about this. We tried to make, you know, kind of a test couple holes back here, but it flooded, so not a good space whatsoever, we learned from our mistakes. Um, we, like Courtney said, it's my goal to try to get more adults in town to do recreational activities, and Marston's a perfect place for that, we have a ton of unused space. Um, disc golf is very low maintenance when it comes to taking care of it, which is what we need right now, we don't really have the staff to take care of it, it's also a very supportive community, they're kind of like, leave no trace, like hikers when it comes to the sport. Um, we, you know, we're always pushed to have volunteers, and I, I truly believe that there's appropriate times and not-so-appropriate times to have volunteers, and we are extremely lucky to have the group that we have right now with the skills, experience, and knowledge when it comes to disc golf, mapping, et cetera, it's also pretty exciting that it's Dan Bunker at the library, we have two officers, uh, Ryan and Chris over at the PD, and Ryan's brother, who is an amateur pro disc golf player. So it's just really cool to see like, employee involvement as well. Um, sponsors have been incredibly generous, we have eighteen holes filled and more, uh, mostly businesses in town and a couple families who don't wanna be named, but the time period which it took to fill up was extremely fast, like...
Less than a month.
Yeah, it's just amazing the support we've gotten from this, um, I feel like which is a reflection of what the community wants as well. So, we have most of the money, I'm waiting on, I think, three checks from other people, and Chris Alvarez over at the PD has done a wonderful job getting other sponsorships, including signage, um, Ryan Sylvain at the PD, his mom works for Quick Crete, so that could be other materials for tee pads. We have concrete leftover from the playground build, and then we have for any type of maintenance where tee pads are involved, like buying wood to make sure that we can make the tee pads the way that they should be, that can also be backed by rec revolving, there is money in there for that as well. Yeah, but overall, very minimal Yep. spending money at all.
And I think a big question is, yes, we have this really big, wonderful conceptual design at Marston, with everything that's going on, I don't really see us asking the town for more money to get things that are gonna cost us over a hundred thousand dollars, like a playground, or a tennis court, or stuff like that, at least not right now. Um, this is a, a, we, we have the money, and we have the support, and we have action to, to start construction, you know, as soon as we can get the green light, so... Yeah.
Is it a wooded area?
It is.
For us?
It is a wooded area.
Open enough that they can...
Yep, there are also, um, some wetlands there, so the, the plan after we get the approval from you all, hopefully, um, will be to reach out to Fish and Game, we've, Chris has made contact with Fish and Game already to, to talk about wetland use, but really, this is such low impact, um, they seem at this time to not have a problem with it, but I haven't contacted them yet, and I would like to go out for a site walk with them as well, just to make sure that we're doing what we can to preserve what's over there, cuz it really is a gem.
Yeah.
Um, and I think another big part that you should touch on
Yeah.
um, is, is the impact on what's currently there.
Yeah, so we do have a trail system over there, um, so I feel like a lot of people, when they think about disc golf being implemented over there, they think that like, the tee pads and the baskets are gonna be on the trail, which seems like a safety hazard, but the only use of the trail in this plan is to cross over to get to either a teapot or a basket. Um, obviously, signage is a huge part of liability, which we plan to have, um, AMI signs in Stratford is giving us five hundred dollars towards those signs. Um, yeah, it's to, it's also like, we talked to Tom Ed in the Trails Committee this past weekend, it's like, to showcase, we have so much land over there, as you can see on this map, that isn't being used at all. Um...
How many acres is it?
Good question, I don't know that off the top of my head. But I mean, just looking at like, the cleared part, which is the baseball and softball and the parking lot, like, we have all of that woods. And the, if you can see the blue part, which is the wetland, there's really, we thought we were gonna run into a lot more, but there's really not a lot over there. Um...
So there's like, one, two, three, four, five holes in the wetland area?
They're not in it.
Right.
It's just the, no, it's the blue on the outside.
Just the line itself?
No, it's the outside areas.
It's the shaded blue.
Yeah, the shaded blue.
Oh, what's that other blue?
That, that's the trail, sorry, that's one of the trails that's already there.
Too close, alright, that's why I was...
That would be too close to call, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we've lucked out with just what the landscape is over there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it takes, it's big.
It is big, so, you know, I think for next...
So amateurs wouldn't be able to play this, cuz I'd need the open field.
Yes.
There's a lot of obstacles.
But...
Keep in the trees.
Uh, what's the par?
We are gonna hopefully have multiple tee pads, meaning that you could have a beginner, intermediate, or advanced, so, Tim, you're welcome to go play if that happens.
So we don't call them women's and men's tees?
I'll be up on that.
Tim's tees and regular people's tees.
And I, and I think a big question too that we, we typically answer a lot is, you know, what kind of revenue could be generated from something like this? I think there's one, a big benefit to having a free resource that this community can go out and utilize, number one, but number two, like, the rec can use it for programs, summer camp can go use it at any time. Um, Dan has worked with us, we're gonna do a disc golf kind of promo week in Parks and Recreation Month with the library, um, to kind of showcase what kind of the plans are, and, you know, to get people excited about it. Um, but eventually, like, if this becomes an actual course, people would wanna play here for tournaments, we could do fundraisers, um, that sort of stuff. Um, the community is, is, is large.
Yeah.
And wonderful, and a lot of them have offered to, to help us build, so we're, we're hoping to to, to grab onto as many helpers as we can.
It's usually no charge for disc golf.
No, nope. Some courses have donation, yeah, some courses have donation bins, and we could find a way in the, in the future to have like, a rent-a-disc type of thing, um, to make it a little bit more user-friendly for everybody, um, but yeah, I mean...
That's a nightmare too, though.
Kind of, but we can make it work.
Slot machine.
For maintenance of the project, you gotta have like, a non-am group friends of the disc golf or something to bring people together to do the cleanup on the trails after the winter, do the maintenance on it.
Yeah, we'd probably...
If somebody vandalizes something, so that's not gonna be a burden on the town.
Nope, nope. We do that anyways.
Not even saying a burden, that's wrong word. An expense on the town, it's gonna be taken care of by...
Integrate it in our normal, I mean, we do a cleanup days over at Marston anyways, so, it would be the same, and I think we have enough funds to buy an extra basket, in case a basket gets damaged.
Do you take them down in the winter?
So there are baskets that you can remove, uh, like, basically cemented in the ground with a pole, and you can take them out, I don't believe we're getting those baskets.
No, I think we, we chose to go with the, the, the best one. Um, because we raised all of the funds that we needed to, um, and they're high-quality, meant to be outside, meant to last, should last us a very long time.
Yeah.
Year-round.
Yeah, yeah.
And with mild winters that we've been having, you know, early on, people will still go out and use them.
Right, snowshoes, whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
Amazing.
A hybrid sport.
You can go out there and run the lake, you can just go out.
Right.
That's true, it's too, ice is meant to be thin.
Our, our goal with this project too is to really, you know, Marston's a hot topic, and we understand that, so I think this is a way to bridge kind of some, get some different people, um, out, and to see how nice it is, um, to watch a game, I just drove by a baseball game being played there, and it really is a cool spot. Um, the trails are really neat, there's a lot of great wildlife, um, a lot of really nice things to see, and I just think this would add a different dimension to that property, and the good thing is, is it can always be moved, so if there is a need for a track, you know, fifteen, twenty years from now, you can move those poles, no problem.
How much mowing is it gonna need, like?
No mowing.
None.
No mowing.
It's all trail, yeah.
But it's... I mean, I'm just thinking that stuff's gonna grow, like, might need to do a
Weed whacker.
Not, not a weed whacker, but, you know, one of those...
We rake the trails, so when we have our cleanup, we usually rake the trails once a year, and honestly, they're pretty good for the majority of the six months, you know?
Yep.
And I think it's just, it's, it's even less maintenance than a trail cleanup. Because you, you want those obstacles. They have, I mean, honestly, like, Dan Bunker's really great at what he does, and he has his own course, I don't know if he'd, I'm sharing that on his behalf, but he's ve- very creative with the different shots, and a lot of time has gone into this development.
Yeah.
And we got that, I mean, for no cost, so...
What about the, um, let's say the popularity of this goes big?
Bananas.
How do we police that, how do we keep it organized, how do you keep this, or is it just, hopefully we're gonna keep the will of the people, that the people who are out there, they can just play nice with each other?
Yeah, I mean...
Oh, I'm just asking, I don't know.
Two of the volunteers we have are police officers, so we've talked about that before, well, I mean, it's, Chris said he'd be out there all the time, but...
That's right.
No, there's always the risk, you know, people doing things they shouldn't be doing on public property, but that's something that happens anyways. Um, honestly, if it gets crazy, my biggest concern is parking over there, but hopefully, I think, I think generally, and there's always some outliers, but like, the culture that this activity brings respects nature and respects...
Would you just have some sort of policy in place if like, somebody wanted to have a tournament, a small tournament over there, or something, they talked to the rec first to reserve this?
Or we would run it, yeah.
Yeah, I think...
They can actually charge for that.
Uh, yeah, I agree, I think any type of private use would have to be reserved, just like our fields, just like our town, you know, the town rooms.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah.
Alright, so going back to the beach question, how do we advertise this without calling it Free Disc Golf?
What do you mean?
On our website?
You mean like, you're afraid there's gonna be a lot of people there?
Well, having...
Encouraging outsiders.
Right.
Oh.
Don't you wanna encourage outsiders?
Well...
I think we do.
Not necessarily. I mean, I, I'm okay with people bringing their friends, but you know, I don't want a bunch of hooligans coming from Massachusetts to just go play disc golf.
I know, I think that that is probably a concern that every town has with everything, but I just want to be able to offer something for our town, you know, I want them to be able to have this opportunity without the worry of someone's always gonna ruin something, right?
And I'm just trying to prevent people
Yeah.
from ruining, ruining it for others.
Yes, and I mean, I think people, we, you know, put pickleball lines down there a while ago, people from out of town probably play pickleball there too, I think it's, just take it case by case.
So start it up, see how it starts running, and then reevaluate it from there.
Yeah.
Yeah. The plan is to put lots of signage out first. Um, we're not gonna advertise it on other people's, you know, websites and out-of-town stuff like that. it on other people's, you know, websites and out of town stuff like that.
People drive all over to play disc golf.
They do, they do, but.
And they search them out, and they go, and they have fun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they really don't ever see any negative comments about them.
I was just, I haven't seen any horror stories, there's a lot of public courses and, you know.
Yeah, all around us, Raymond.
All around us.
Yeah.
So, and if that's something that you, you know, there's one at Smutty Nose and I think Hampton, and you pay four dollars to play it, so that could always be an option, too, but I, I think putting a price tag on that is not.
Right, but then you have to have somebody there collecting fees.
Yeah, you can't, we can't manage that, so I, yeah, there's risk, there's always risk.
I think it sounds great, personally, I don't play.
It's like, are you gonna collect enough fees to pay the person to work there?
Right, that's why you don't want to go there.
Probably not. Yeah, so, next steps, um, we wanna start, you know, we don't want to go too slow, but we don't want to bite off more than we can chew, so I think the first step, that Bridgette's working with the, the crew, is to get nine holes by fall, we're hoping, um, with the appropriate signage, we don't want to, on, we don't want to, like, let this course be open without appropriate signage, and if there's a section that we need netting to protect the river, like, that's all stuff that's going to be taken into consideration as well. We don't want a whole bunch of discs that end up in the river to, to cause problems that way either, so, and these guys are very good about.
Yeah.
Knowing that, knowing what to do about that.
We also did, already talked to Dale about any potential permitting, and he said, we're fine.
Things aren't cheap either, so it's not like people are gonna be tossing them and not going to look.
Right.
It's not like a golf ball.
No, no, people won't go and get their discs and bring it back.
And this is gonna be funded by the Nottingham Parks and Rec Department?
It sure is.
A little bit left outside of their donations.
No, you already got all the donations for the eighteen holes, you're just, just time to get it all together.
Yep.
And you got a grant, too?
No.
No.
The reason why, so, we, if you were going for the grant that we looked up, or Chris looked up, you could go, if you're applying for nine holes, I think you could get one basket, if you were doing eighteen, you'd get two, but with the amount of support that we had, I thought it was really cool to give the opportunity to businesses in town to have permanent signage there, and we got them, so.
And it's not gonna be a yearly thing they're gonna pay for that sign?
No, forever.
Just the one time?
Yeah. Which is.
Until it needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
Until we die, I guess, yeah.
Your sponsored basket is broken.
Which is also really cool to do as a municipality, because we don't have any, like, tax write-offs or anything that we can offer businesses, so seems like a win-win.
Gonna be sticker vinyl.
Yeah, there'll be, like, metal parking signs.
Yeah.
And they'll be printed from AMI, which are very costly.
I don't need to sign this one, because we've already got three.
Well, you can, there's only three spots, don't worry about it. Sorry.
That's okay.
Nothing.
Well, I'm gonna go for it.
Do we need to take a motion to approve the plan? What do we need? Are we in favor of?
I don't think we need a motion, do we?
I don't know, we're not really expending money, but it's.
Right.
Money, but I guess they're doing the changes.
Expenditures will be upcoming.
Yes.
Is what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, we don't need to give them any permission to make changes, they're not really making any hard and fast changes to Marston?
Just some trees.
Make them install a disc golf course or anything, I'm just making sure.
I get it. We might have to have a select board meeting there.
There you go.
Could do that.
That'd be fun.
So the board gives the blessing for them to move forward with this project?
Yeah.
Yes. Same, go for it, I'm gonna.
I agree.
That's the sign stuff. Let us know.
Thank you.
We'll vote on and approve it at the time it needs to be signed, but for right now.
Green light.
Thanks for your work on it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our volunteers, too.
Can't wait to retire, so I can go play disc golf. Don't have to play regular golf, but.
Go down to Smutty Nose.
Yeah. Uh. Do you have any action items for next, uh, meeting?
Town Beach?
Yeah.
Town Beach, Town Beach. Town Beach.
And I, the future, I don't know if that's next meeting or some future meeting about doing the, um.
The building permit fees. The building permit fees.
And then on the next meeting, too, we'll have the recycling center in ours discussion.
Yeah.
The open to the public.
Do we have the proposed fees to be?
We don't, we need to have, I, I need to get together with Dale and do a fees assessment.
Right.
Probably a comparison to what.
If we could just get that beforehand and kind of where.
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly.
Why don't we tentatively add that to the seven fifteen agenda? And then if we need more time, we can push it out further.
All right, good idea. Just don't want to forget it. Does this one need signature?
We ended up approving that, that was the.
No, baby, we want to know. That's just a.
I don't want to miss something that I missed, because I missed one, like, a couple weeks ago.
We caught you, though. We caught you, though.
I know.
Uh, so right now, since that discussed, we're gonna open this up for a short distance, because we, a short time, because we do have to go into non-public tonight, so this is time for any public comment, if anybody wants to come up and make a statement about something, now's your time.
Don Hernel, town moderator, just a reminder, tomorrow at ten AM in this room, we're doing the LHS demo of old books and their new ballot counting device, so, my name is Free, welcome.
So tomorrow at ten AM, they'll be doing the voting machines here in the conference room one.
Yep.
If anyone wants to come and watch and observe. It is open to the public.
I have Dr. Swoon in.
Any else?
I have a question.
Sure.
Sean Sanders, five letter, I'm here about the town beach, I just, it's my first select board meeting, I jumped into the minutes that are available online, obviously, the recently.
Just come up, just for the recording, please.
Approved, the recently approved minutes from June third, obviously, are not available, so I didn't get to look at them, jumped into the registry to look at the deeds and easements and everything, um, I was just curious, because I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not understanding, um, the, why the things have changed, obviously, I do, I know the landowners are, are looking for indemnity, is what I see in the minutes, but I'm just curious, um, all I've really officially seen it on it is on Facebook, and obviously, that's not the best place to get your official info, so that's kind of what I'm here for, is the crux of the argument or the conflict or problem or whatever it is we're trying to solve, and then my other, you know, coming here tonight and hoping that maybe we have something maybe in two weeks is just a little frustrating, so I'm curious if there's anything that the town folks can do to assist, to expedite, um, you know, I know that you're trying to drive it with your lawyer, and I work in land development, so I understand it can be frustrating, but, um, I know that there, it seems to me that there's a lot of people in town who are, um, you know, very excited about the beach opening, and I think that they're all willing to jump in and help however we can, so, the question is, if, uh, you could direct me on where to go to see what the crux of the issue is, and then.
So I would recommend that you read the meeting minutes from, uh, May twenty-third.
I did read those, I didn't think that they were all that beefy in terms of.
Did you watch the meeting?
No, no, I read the minutes.
I'd recommend watching the meeting.
And there's a link right on the Board of Selectmen page for the YouTube, for all the past meetings.
Okay. Thank you, and then regarding, I think, the townspeople can do to expedite.
I, I don't believe so, I think it's just an agreement that the town has to come with from, with the property owners that actually own the town beach access road.
Right, no, I understand that, for sure.
That's what we're just trying to come to get sent, to make sure that we.
You're saying the attorney has been in court, and the attorneys are in court, you know, so.
The attorney had a, um, a lengthy time to be able to draft an agreement, we started this conversation with them back in February.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, ultimately, the agreement that was drafted wasn't exactly what the town[1705.32]